Okay, good evening. We will now call the Madras City Council meeting to order at 6:57. Kelly, can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Lapine.
Present.
Counselor Townsend is excused. Counselor Sebold?
I am still present.
Counselor Solis?
Present.
Counselor Spencer?
Here still.
And Counselor Yoder and Counselor Walker are both excused. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
Barely.
Any public comments? Any public comment on Zoom? Will, you're still awake. I see that. All right. Any changes to the regular agenda? None? And there's nothing on the consent agenda, so we're just going to move all the way down to the regular agenda. Authorization of the letter of support for Jefferson County to acquire Miller lumber property for food pantry. Nick?
Yes. As I understand it, Jefferson County is requesting or making an offer to the Central Oregon Community College, who now owns the former Miller lumber property located at 36 Southeast Sixth Street. I would note the county administrator is in the audience this evening, so if we've got additional questions beyond that that I can answer, we'll maybe need to ask him to come up. The county would like a letter of support from the city to give to COCC to express our support, hopefully persuade them in accepting their offer in that transaction. The county's intention is to enter into what I would generally describe to be as a long-term lease to the food pantry and use that for that nonprofit purpose there. And so if you've got any questions beyond that, be happy to answer them or maybe defer to the county administrator.
I do. I have no, I'm not against doing the letter and the support. They do need a place. But is there any way we can, I don't know, write it there more than verbalizing that, again, about the traffic, et cetera? They do occupy part. And somehow when they, if they get it and they remodel, that they have to, you know, tear down part of it to have the traffic visual, et cetera. I mean, be part of it. So we are being proactive in this matter.
I don't think they're going to have the funding for that.
Independent of that.
I don't, I don't disagree with that being ideal. I don't think we can add terms in a letter of support, though. I think it's either we support them or we don't.
So the county's buying it. So Jeff, can the county remodel that?
Jefferson Asmussen County Administrative Officer. I think we recognize that if we did own it, we would feel an obligation to try and improve the sightlines.
You like that, Patricia? All right.
I move that the City Council approve the letter of support for Jefferson County to acquire the former Miller lumber property for the food pantry to operate.
Second.
That was fast. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'm supposed to abstain so that you can vote.
No, I'm kidding. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Still a majority rule.
It's still a majority.
And I, of course, I agree.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Mayor Lapine, it was pointed out to me that there is incorrect date in terms of the year of one of the statements made in the letter of support. So just note that I'll do a quick edit on that letter of support, make sure it's factually correct, and then request your signature on that.
Thank you. Next, recommendation to appoint candidate for two MRC. Kelly?
This is just your formal action to make a motion to appoint Angela Rhodes, who the commission recommended to the MRC?
I'll make the motion that the council accept the recommendation of MRC to appoint Angela Rhodes to fill a vacant position in the Madras Free Development Commission term beginning 1/23/2024 and ending on 12/31/2026.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I've got a question for Kelly. She did leave right after. Do you know if she had other appointments that she was not able to sit through the remainder of our MRC meeting?
We had just previously discussed that the action would be taken once the interview was done. And so I think that was part of the reason, was that we had previously said that the meeting would be going long and that I would be reporting back to her on your guys' decision.
Okay. That, to me, says a lot about being able to attend throughout the meetings after appointing, appointing the position. I know our last appointees to the MRC sat through the entirety of the meeting. So I struggle with that one myself.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Still a majority. You guys are pushing me. Number three, resolution number 02-2024 Fee Schedule for Fiscal Year 23 to 24. Rose?
After much ado, here it is for your final approval. We had to go back to the drawing board after the first council meeting that it was presented at. And then we had a work session, and there were a final few tweaks made to some public works fees. And to the very best of my ability, this is an accurate representation of the fee schedule that council wanted to approve. So please approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 02-2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Number four, amendment two for COIC Warming Shelter. Is Jeff here? Are you speaking?
I'm speaking.
Go for it, Michelle.
You're stuck with me tonight.
All right.
So this one's pretty simple. This is amendment to the COIC grant. We made their deadline of having the warming shelter open on the 10th of January, which was the biggest thing. But we still have some final expenditures that we're working on doing, especially the F, F, and E. So this just extends that out so we can go ahead and make those purchases and still fall under their, the grant agreement. So this is just amendment to extend that.
So this is just basically a legal maneuver, is not really changing any of the substance of the agreement?
No.
All right. I was going to say, I move that council approves the amendment to sub recipient agreement between COIC and the glorious city of Madras.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. City vouchers, October to December. Rose?
I probably forgot to put that we needed. Oh, I do have a motion on this one. Yay, okay. I just need the council to approve, this is three months, just like with the MRC, of payables that were made. You can see the disbursement list for each of the month, and then followed by the check registers and the P-card reports.
I make a motion that the council approve the October, December 2023 CD vouchers as submitted.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Capital expenditures, December 23. Rose?
So for the capital expenditures for the month of December, there is one that isn't going to be on here because it'll be paid into Merle's check run. And that is the last payment for the J Street Bridge project. Just wanted to point that out. So we're very excited that that is going to be done, and then I can submit the last reimbursement request to Jefferson County. Other than that, you know, it hasn't been super busy with capital expenditures because it's been so cold. This will get much more active in the next six months. But this is just a year-to-date where we're at so far in finishing our projects.
My question would be, obviously, we want it to be already 50%, right? So I know sometimes we don't spend it all, or sometimes we're over. The red ones, any particular reason that we're ahead of spending? The one that's administration and non-departmental?
I did look into those, and that's basically just a timing thing. So if I had ran it for six months, like if we had paid some of those in January, some of the expenses that hit for those funds, it wouldn't have been over. But it's just a, it's just timing on how it hits.
And then the 0%, the improvement fee. Any reason we haven't spent that? How is it usually used that money that we're in 0% so far, being halfway through?
That would be a good question for Public Works. Sometimes he has agreements with builders that, so they'll put money into there when they're working on a specific project, and it builds up, but we just haven't had anything like that so far this year.
Okay. I make a motion.
Okay. Next, second quarter financial update. Rose?
Well, we kind of started talking about this one a second ago, but this is the quarterly update that finance prepares for council, showing where we're at with our year-to-date actuals to budget. And as I said, there's, I'm not concerned about admin and non-departmental being slightly over. That will, that will smooth itself out in the coming months. And everything else appears to be on track. No concerns. Does anyone have any questions?
I was just going to ask if you had any other concerns that don't reflect in this spreadsheet that you want us to be aware of.
Counselor Sebold, the only concern we have, which we're working internally on, is our legal spend continues to remain strong. And we are hoping over the next few months, we'll be able to level that out and reduce it. But that is the only one that I'm aware of that we have any concerns over.
Where does that end up coming out of? Is that under the non-departmental? Is that out of administration?
It's sliced and diced a million ways. It's in a little bit of everything.
Perfect. Thank you.
Can we just pay him? Would we fair to counsel?
They may be opposed to that.
I do think that's well, point well taken, Will. I do think that's something we need to develop a bigger picture strategy on moving forward as far as the best way to defray our costs, whether it's just changing our processes so we use it less, or whether we look at in-house counsel. I wouldn't claim to have the plan right now, but I do think it's just something we need to do a 360 evaluation on. Thank you.
Is that it, Rose? All right, thank you. E-citations agreement and grant funding approval. Chief?
Thank you very much for entertaining. This is something we've talked about for several months, and we're at that point to really take that big step forward. So under the motion for consideration, I make sure that we get all the parts in here that, that we're seeking, and that is that, first of all, that the council approve a five-year agreement with Central Square Solutions, who are the people for, that provide the e-citation e-crash program. Authorize the city administrator and the police chief to sign the required documents to implement the program, and also to receive funding from the Oregon Department of Transportation to fund the build and the first-year subscription to that service. There's a lot of information that is included in the overview, but I want to hit some of the highlights real quick to give you the mayor and the council an idea of the efficiencies that are going to be gained. If you look at that second line right there, it's each citation has at least 122 potential fields that officers must complete correctly. I know that because I went through and counted them all. Any one of which can void the citation, meaning it's not going to go forward. So what, two things, a couple of things have to happen. The courts just say, no file. They don't do anything with it. We send it back. We have to find the person and recite them. The other thing that it does is that, some things that will also cause a rejection by the court is that they can't read them. Because what they do, and you'll learn in this document, but it's just kind of being summarized, is they take that four-pipe, that we send over one copy of that citation. They turn around and have to read it and have somebody actually enter it into their database. They can't read the information on that document. That causes a problem as well. So that is an efficiency gain that's going to happen over there. We sort them, we send them, we can get them back. It causes a delay. Some of the other things that gain from a handwritten citation require officers to be at roadside longer, which exposes them to a number of risks from a number of different sources. So it also makes them unavailable the whole time that they're handwriting these citations and serving them. Several Oregon cities, state police use this, use this process. The courts right now currently use e-citations from the Oregon State Police. So their mechanism is in place already on the backend to receive these. Couple of other things that this happens by e-citations. It, we don't, we can collect stop data, which we're required to collect on every traffic stop or contact that we have with people. And because these fields are filled out electronically, we can, that fleece comes right out of there. We don't have to actually hand serve and hand record all that stop data that comes from those contacts. Some of the other things that it pushes directly over from our dispatch, it auto-populates the fields with the statute number, the fines, the court address, time, location. One of the other efficiencies that's really gained is in our public records requests. Right now, there's, insurance company hires a group called Lexus. And those people send us crash report requests all the time to help process their claimants' insurance claims. And so that, we have to document all, every time that those come in, every time those go out. What this does is that it has the ability to do e-crash forms. It auto-populates those fields, everything from the driver, the passengers, the date, time, the vehicle insurance information, the vehicle, and what this does is that at scene, we can print out a version of that report that's called the operator's report. We just hand it to the operators at the scene. Therefore, they have the information. They need to complete a DMV crash report that they're required to do, and they don't have to come to our office, or Lexus Nexus doesn't have to send things in for us to fill that. So those are some of the benefits to gain that come from that, the efficiencies that are going to happen. One of the things that, to be, in all transparency, is that the agreements that we're asking authorization for, even currently the ODOT grant, is that there is a match component to the ODOT Traffic Safety's grant, but it is in kind, is what they refer to it. What we do is we take a portion of officer's time and effort that we do in enforcement, and that becomes the match component of it. So there's no real cash transfer. There just has to be a proof of service, that we are actually engaged in doing police work and traffic enforcement. So that's, that's great. The other side that we're exploring, and I've had conversations with them, is ODOT oftentimes with these grants do what's called a step-down grant, which means right now we do an 11% match. Next year, it'll be, or if they, if they do a step-down grant in this, that they're looking at doing for the county of Klamath and all those political subdivisions, is that it becomes, the next year, this is just an example, it'll be a 70-30 split. They pick up 70%, we pick up 30, and it just moves down until the completion of the five-year contract. The other thing that we're exploring is that there's a real possibility that this grant in this program could qualify for ARPA funds, and it would take care of all the yearly subscription and through, and licensing through the life of the contract. So if there's any questions, I mean, there's a lot of documents here. A lot of them are just the supporting documents and the contracts between Central Square, Motorola. Those folks are the ones that our printers are going to come through, and they provide the connectivity. And then, then also, who else we got? Central Square, Oregon Department of Transportation.
I congratulate you in your effort and looking into the system. I highly believe in technology and IT, and you will benefit. Plus, you just exposed in there that this is already used in others, so it's proven. The only thing I would say is just, I hope it doesn't happen like in the health field, that it's a nightmare. Basically, you are there to feel a computer more than attending the person in need in our case. And I hope, I don't, I hope it's not the case for you. So when you start using it, that you're feeding a system instead of the person. And the second thing is that, and you mentioned it yesterday, is that the system falls. No internet, no electricity, so you need a backup. And so I guess, and you're, you're going to have to have a little book click with you. It's just us. I have my little prescription pad, you know? And even in the hospital, we do have, we print in the morning in paper what the patients supposedly we ordered, just in case the system falls, which is very, very often. And when I say that, I mean, this is a hospital. They need to give medications. And it falls, I would say, two weeks in total in a year. It's horrible. So just to be careful with the backup, that you can have minimum. But I absolutely agree with you, and I do approve it. Congratulations.
Thank you, and I really do appreciate that. I've been doing e-citations and e-crashes for two decades. And they do fail, they do fault, and the printers do the same thing. They all fail and fault. And I still, to this day, still carry a Uniform Criminal and Traffic Citation Ticket Book. And I still know how to fill them out, and, and that's, because there are some citations, like for example, we do cite and release sometimes for criminal acts. And so they don't go on traffic citations. And so they actually have to be on a handwritten one, or either they would take somebody into custody and fill out a PC affidavit. So we're not going to let that go. I know technology is great, but we always have to be ready for default, and they do. So thank you very much.
Chief, how many citations does Madras PD issue in a year, six months, a quarter, if you have any of that data?
That is, I don't have that data, but what I can tell you is what I've seen on Randy's desk. And that is, you've probably seen the citations. The citations are pretty thin once you start tearing them apart. I've seen a four-inch stack sitting on his desk that he has to go through and make sure he fleeces the information off of them that we have and then send over to the court. And then I've, so I can't tell you that, but I can actually find that out. But I know that just in the time that he meticulously has to go over, and then we have to file them, and we have to keep them. And by having them electronically, that is done for us. And then, so retrieval, the other day, we did, I mean, a couple of weeks ago, I saw one where we had to find the citation. And so we had to go to the box, had to find them, and by date, then by name, and then, then pull a copy out because the person had lost theirs. And so we needed to do that. And that probably took 15 minutes just to find that citation, to pull it out, simply because they're so thin. And you have to find them one at a time to make sure that you give them the right one and not somebody else's. So it's a great question, and if you want to, I can definitely dig that up. Because we really want to, part of the grant, as you look through here, part of the grant requirements is that we take a look back and see what efficiency gains we have had. And we have to report that out to ODOT and to what kind of cost or time savings we did. So we're actually going to have to go through and do a cost analysis. What does it cost us to handle a citation? From roadside all the way through to where it goes to the court when we file it? And then what have we gained by not having to do that anymore?
Are you saying we haven't done a cost-benefit analysis yet on this to determine whether the $20,000 a year cost for this software is worth the offset of the amount of staff time involved?
We haven't done a hard cost analysis on this. I can just tell you, from my experience of watching what they were doing with those citations, that hasn't been done by a lot of agencies for almost two decades, because it costs, it is labor-intensive.
I would see this, it's an excellent question, Counselor Solis. But I, I could visualize all the efficiency. Plus, it will give an incentive and time for the police officers to do more citations. And now that we're getting also full staff, we will have more people there, and we will be doing more citations for sure. So we're looking not only to fix now, but we are increasing our capacity for the future.
I don't disagree. I agree with you 100%. That is entirely accurate. And I'm not necessarily opposed to this, but I think it's an important question for us as counselors to ask. Because when, when you as staff bring requests like this to us, it's our job to determine whether this is the route that we want the city to take, whether this is the best interest of the people and the best use of the public dollars. And so having that evaluation done ahead of time then allows us to be able to look at this and be like, oh, yeah, he's going to save $30,000 a year in staff time based on this analysis that was done. That allows us to be able to look at it and really quick decide, yep, this is good. We're totally fine. So that's something I think is important for just, not just you, Chief, but all departments to consider as they bring requests to us. In this, I'd also like to, just again, as a reminder, and I know I've mentioned this multiple times, but council wants body cams. And so looking at that, and would we have enough to have gone into the body cam route if we don't approve this and vice versa, right? It's making sure that the priorities that council has align with what staff's got moving forward. I know that we're looking towards next year for body cams or even a year after, but we're locking up 20 grand a year by doing this. So that's just something for council to think about, that when we lock something in like this, maybe 20 grand a year is all it would have taken to get our budget to a point where we could have body cams next year. But because we approved this, we suddenly can't, and we're stuck waiting until we can find that other 20 grand elsewhere. So that's my two cents on it. I'm not opposed to it. I just want, wanted to say that.
Yeah, I would say I don't disagree with the principle. My middle name is Cost Bens Analysis. I love Cost Bens Analysis. It's how I run my whole business. It's how I think. My wife jokes that I'm like Neo in The Matrix, and all I see is zeros and ones. That is how I live. So Solis is speaking my language. But that said, I would say that my instincts are 20,000 a year. Once you look at the efficiency gains, you look at the employee morale gains, which are substantial. Once you look at, as Counselor Spencer mentioned, the opportunity cost of additional tickets or citations, whatever the right terminology would be, that even if it didn't quite pencil out, although my instinct is it probably does compared to labor cost. But just hypothetically, even if it would cost 20 and it saved us 15, so it was net five, the value of the, you know, the employee morale bump and the efficiency bump and all these things would be worth it. So a point well taken, Counselor Solis, and I'm sure you don't disagree with what I just said. But, so my instincts are, I think this is a good value proposition, and I would approve it.
And Counselor Solis and Sebold, if it helps, the first agency I worked at right outside of Seattle, Washington, went to e-citations, and we had to do the exact same thing for the grant. And we were able to prove that we were able to double the savings with the labor involved. Because just processing them, handling them, transferring them to the courts, making sure the courts add them, et cetera, the tracking, just going away with that was rather significant cost savings. So if that helps.
Yep. And I'm, I mean, I believe you guys wholeheartedly. I mean, you guys are the experts. I am certain that the data is there to support it. It's just bringing that data to us so that we can also see it. Because then I can say to the constituents, if they ask me, why did you do this? I can be like, hey, look at this. Look at the numbers. Look at the data saying, hey, we should do this. I mean, I think everybody in here knows by now that I like data. So.
And Mike likes zeros and ones.
So dumb question. If one approves and two abstain, then you have to vote? Because it's not majority, right?
No, if one approves.
And two abstain?
And one walks away.
Two abstain. That's right. And then he votes.
Yeah. So no, there's no way I have to vote.
Okay. Just try. Okay, I'll make a motion that the council approve a five-year agreement with Central Square Solutions for the e-citations program and authorize the city administrator and police chief to sign any required documents to implement the program and receive grant, grant funding from the Oregon Department of Transportation to fund the first year.
I second this resolution.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? It is unanimous. You're welcome, Chief.
No, I was, I was just going to say thank you for that, because to all of your points, it is well taken. And as I said, that data is going to be forthcoming. But again, it was kind of the court, the horse before the cart. But just as Will said, I've watched this happen a number of times. And when you can eliminate a full-time, an FTE, because of the efficiencies you gain, that's really a big testimonial.
Okay. Approval letter for support for Jefferson County Broadband Tech Assistance Grant. Nick?
Yes. Jefferson County, pardon me, in support of COIC's effort to submit a regional grant for the three counties to obtain their allocated $150,000 grant each for broadband technical assistance through the Broadband Technical Assistance Program through the Oregon Broadband Office, they, they would like a letter of support from the city. This is important because broadband is part of your annual goal, and as many of us still today, including myself, struggle with broadband. This grant would allow us to advance our broadband plan in terms of additional planning, preliminary design, and other related technical work. And conversations just, just today and yesterday are that we And conversations just, just today and yesterday are that we would like to continue this work so we can continue to be out in front of the other counties and cities in the state. So that when the actual construction dollars come out for the infrastructure builds, we're in that much better of a position relative to other cities and counties. So letter of support, generally speaking, pretty easy to do, right? But strategically, what this allows us to do is Jefferson County can use these dollars to hire consultants to help us continue to be ahead. And that strategically is, is what we want and quite frankly, need for our community and county as well. So that is the request this evening.
I see no downside to it, and I view it as consistent with our strategic goals. So I will make a motion unless somebody else has other comments. I move that the city council approve the letter of support for the Jefferson County Broadband Technical Assistance Grant application to the Oregon Broadband Office.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, unanimous. Madras Valentine Banner Funding Request, Nick. You're not going to give a big banner at home for Courtney, are you? Another $200 bottle of wine that you made me pay.
She would actually, she would not appreciate that. No, that's, that's not her love language. So Doctor Spencer, who is also our city counselor, did email me a couple of weeks ago about funding that, from the city to offset the cost for banners to be put up at the North and South Y as well as on our decorative streetlights throughout the downtown area that have the banner brackets on them. The city has about $3,000 of unallocated funding remaining in your community grants program. And so I don't know what level, if any, interest the county has, or, pardon, the, the city council has to fund this. And so that's really the discussion. And should you get to a point you want to approve some funding, we can help you with a motion. And I know that our interim finance director has some additional information for us.
We did a little more digging on this too. And the Madras Downtown Association applied for a community grant and was approved and has not used all of the money yet. So that money's still on the table too. If they, if they've already bought the banners and they want to use, and they want to apply for reimbursement, they can use their community grant money.
They have not, I submitted the letter to them and to the Chamber of Commerce, the three entities. And the idea is that each one would pay part of it. They did not pay for it. I paid for it as a personal citizen. And so it's looking for reimbursement for that and because it's in their benefit. This is a downtown event, and these banners can be used for five, six, seven years ahead. The dates can be changed. Twenty-two businesses benefit directly for this day. They have not been hung due to weather, but they're already done. But the idea is that everybody could chip a little bit in, so. But they haven't got back to say how much they would put in.
Wait, I have a question. So it's the pink, it says Madras Valentine Day Downtown, is that the right? So it says there's 25 and then one big one, or all 25 of them, that same pink one?
The banner, the long one, is for the lamppost. Those are 25 of those. And they go hanging in downtown, you know, all those little flags and banners that you have. And the big one is one in, both in entrances. And they're separate because the upper one can be reused. Instead, the date, you can change it every year.
So is there any event on the seventh? Is there like a big Valentine's Day thing going on on the seventh? Is that why it says the seventh?
That's the Madras Downtown. So there's a passport and they go and visit, and there's going to be a big raffle to be done at the end of the, of the day. After they visit all these, they have to go and stamp it.
So yes, there is an event going on on the seventh.
Oh yeah, that's the event. That's the event.
Thank you.
And I just offered to pay because we need to put them right away. But then it was like, okay, each one to try to pay back to the amount. Because I don't take them home, they're not mine. I just offered as a private citizen to, to pay for them.
I was going to say, so this, but you're doing this through the Madras Downtown Association. Has the Chamber of Commerce been at all involved in this?
Yes, also they are involved. And I also submitted the email to them, and they haven't got back because Debbie Taylor, and she could speak, she's there. It's just brand new, two days. So she has the email, and obviously she was asking the board and everybody how much they would put.
Well, the board hasn't seen this yet, we haven't met yet. The chamber board hasn't.
I'm, I'm very confused on what this is for and the process behind it. I'm not necessarily in favor of putting money towards this. Don't, doesn't the city maintain the banners on the lampposts throughout the downtown?
We maintain them, we help pay for them. And in years past, the chamber and, and the city have helped pay for the banners that are on downtown that were, our former city recorder worked with a local artist to get those designed. They basically reflect a lot of our major events. So they have those events on those banners as you drive around. And the intention is that you'll see the, the fair on it, the, you know, the different events throughout the year. So you don't have to change them because the Public Works Department does go out and actually change them. Have to get in the bucket truck, change all these. So it's, it's, there would be cost, but also labor associated with it. I'm assuming the Public Works Department knows about this and is, is able to schedule this in with their work? I, I don't know about that, but aside from the cost, but logistically, can we pull this off, Michelle?
If we can get all the snow removed. The hard part is that these are all in the downtown. And so when ODOT plows, they plowed everything to, they do, just like we, we plow everything to the outside. So there's piles of snow. And to get the bucket truck in is going to be an issue if it doesn't melt on its own. And then also we have to weather, just weather itself. They can't be in the bucket truck if it's blowing wind and things like that. And I've expressed that to Patricia. She's asked if I can, you know, if we can get it up. And really, we're at the mercy of the weather and then just, our guys are still plowing. We're still removing, we were removing snow today and we will continue to do until we're clear. So, because it takes at least two to three guys to do it, and I have two or three guys plowing snow.
Let me throw this out there. I hate to say this, but is there a conflict of interest with you voting on this, Patricia? If it's to reimburse you personally?
And they couldn't pay at the moment because they have to ask for permission. So basically I said, I'll pay for it and then wait if people will, each one that are within their interest, if they will pay back. So I don't have a conflict of interest in that case. It's just, I just say that they lent the money from me. And if they don't pay, that's fine, I'll just do, it would be an in-kind contribution to the city, which shouldn't be. But it was just against the time, you know? I know everything is within a year. And, but everybody is kicked in already, they have their own, everybody's already working on it. They have already the passports, flyers, everything is running. So I just offered to, to move this along and put it, and ask for the three entities that are benefit from this.
I'm actually going to challenge you on that. I believe you do have a conflict of interest because there is a financial impact to you. And so really, you should recuse yourself from the discussion and the vote on this dollar amount.
I actually agree with him on that as well.
Yeah, I got to say I do too. Even though I think it was very generous of you, and I, I obviously, I don't think anybody thinks you have malicious intent. You're being very generous. I think if you vote on something that directly impacts you financially by definition, I think that's a conflict of interest.
Anybody that, I, I'm going to say it this way. I'm very, very, know about ethics, et cetera. And the thing is that everybody, anybody that would, even from the Madras Downtown Association, they would have to recuse themselves every single time of anything because they work in there, they're there. The city also, and anybody, we would all there. So again, this doesn't, this one doesn't even touch my name or be directly, this is for all the city and downtown. That's why I've been making the discussion. But I can abide for your, what you're saying, but I want you to consider what I just said.
The Madras Downtown Association is not a public body. They don't have the same rules and regulations that we do as a public body. You will be financially impacted by this decision. If we voted to give you any amount of money, it would be money to you, reimbursing you for costs that you incurred. If we do not vote to give you money, then you've already incurred the cost. And so again, it's a financial impact. You have a conflict of interest.
So then, instead of giving it to me, the proper thing would to be whether give it to the chamber or give it to Madras Association Downtown, and they decide what they do with that money, which obviously they should pay what they did. But it's fine, I recuse myself.
I am opposed to this, I will not be making a motion on it.
This is a horrible situation. I feel bad. This is an absolutely horrible situation.
Don't feel bad, this is about just being efficient. It was an idea, it came up, and you just have to make in the private world decision. It was like, you know what, I'll just do it and then we'll figure it out how to do. So don't feel bad, follow whatever rules you have in there, and that's fine.
I still think that my suggestion about you could take this to MDA and say, look, I have a conflict of interest, I can't go through the city, will you reimburse me? And they can apply to the city to use their community grant funds to, right? That would be okay. And that would be a lot cleaner and above board, just something to consider.
Perfect, yeah, I will. We have meeting this Monday, so perfect.
I'd say as long as it meets the requirements for that grant money that they received, yeah. I don't see, run it by legal, because I think this one needs to run by them to some degree. But yeah.
I mean, I guess we don't think we have the votes either way, so I think we just move on.
Right, so there's no motion being made, so.
Lesson learned.
Move on to the next, thank you, Nick. Committee list 2024, Kelly.
Well, there's not much to say on these because this is exactly what we reviewed at the council work session. So all of the changes that we went page by page of this committee list are reflected in there now. With the exception of the red highlighted items that are still within some of the pages are either vacant positions or ones that staff are currently working on. The motion says that this list will evolve over time, but all of the council assignments and staff assignments have been adjusted as we discussed. And I've also reached out to the parties, the entities that you guys serve on certain committees for, like COIC, letting them know of our designations. And I've gotten confirmations back from some that that was sufficient, that's all they needed to confirm you. And I haven't heard from any of the others.
Mayor Lapine, staff's noting, I think as actually Counselor Seville noted at the work session, he may be in air identified as a member of the Homeless Advisory Committee. As I recall, at the work session, you, you said that you didn't think you were a member of that committee, haven't been attending, and therefore probably should be removed. So if you were to take action, I'd, I'd ask that you guys clarify that.
Good catch, thank you, Mr. Sneed.
That was a way to sneak him onto that committee, give him another committee and you're just.
Well, dude, his absence is, he's going to be removed anyways.
That little checkbox. I corrected the second page as well for staff committee assignments to remove the staff names from the top of the list so that it would just reflect the position, so we weren't making those corrections.
I don't know why, this is probably just me, but I don't remember the South Madras Concept Area Refinement Plan Advisory Committee. Is that me just having a mental breakdown?
The South Madrasry, is that the one you're referring to?
Yes.
Yeah, that one is an ongoing committee, I believe. I'm, I'm scrolling to it.
Yeah, it's, it's ongoing, you should be getting emails, I'll double check with our consultant. We were supposed to have a, actually, a meeting last week, it was canceled due to weather. But if you haven't been getting that email, boy, we need to talk and I'll work with the consultant.
I'm not on it, it looks like, but I just don't even remember the committee.
Correct, it's Counselor Solis, Walker, Yoder, Ashlyn Etter from the Planning Commission, and Nick.
Has Gary and Lamar been attending that? I have not.
Uh, yes.
I didn't even know I was on it, so. When does that meet?
Uh, I think we're scheduling for the, our reschedule meeting is the first week in February. I'll get you that date.
What times do they typically meet?
So the Public Advisory Committee meetings are in the afternoon. They're anywhere from, either start at one or two o'clock. And then there's also an open house in some cases, and that's, that's in the evening.
All right, I move that the council approve the 2024 committee list with the understanding that the list will evolve over the course of the year per council request, per the one change of Counselor Seville not being on the Homeless Advisory Committee.
I suppose I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Mike. All right. Counselor Spencer, any?
I have nothing to report, but just say to the staff, great work. It's very nice to come to meetings where presentations are wonderful, they are very wrapped up. So it makes it easy to make decisions and reading through the packet, it's very consistent. So thank you for that. I feel that our role is being counselors and not being active in the today. So thank you for that, great job.
Counselor Solis.
I have nothing to report.
Counselor Seville.
Not much, really not anything, but just one thing to staff. And that is, I've noticed a shift and I like it and I want to keep encouraging it. You guys are the subject matter experts. So whenever you're preparing reports for us, making presentations, we always want to know what you think. So please always include your recommendation based on the staff's expertise, you know, boots on the ground. If we think we should do option A or whatever it is. I think more often than not, we'll probably be inclined to trust your judgment. Occasionally, we might go in a different direction. Please don't take that personally, it's always just going to be on the merits of the option tree. But I wanted to say that, I've seen some shifts, I think that's wonderful. And beyond that, I've got nothing else to report. Will, I hope you feel better and looking forward to doing our budget triaging on January 31st.
Thank you, counselors. I want to point, express my gratitude to our, our staff who did superb work during this cold snap that we had. My wife tours Facebook quite a bit and was pointing out where people may have thought ODOT was dropping the ball. People, our, your community, we're, we're pointing out where our city public works were picking it up and sanding where they could and plowing where they could. Our lead staff here were sending people home when need be, when the weather was getting crappy and the, it was becoming unsafe. I thought that was prudent, very prudent, and that keeping the ideal people out there to keep the rest of us safe. So everybody, thank you for the strong work you've done.
Chief?
Can I actually jump in real quick? Sorry, I do have one thing that I want to say. Rose, I know this is your last meeting as our interim finance director. And I think it's only appropriate for us as council to thank you for the effort that you've put in as being the interim. You really stepped up and assisted the department through a rough time and a long time, and have done a lot of hard work. And I think that we need to recognize that publicly, and thank you for that work. We appreciate you and hope that you will continue to serve the city of Madras well. Thank you.
Thank you, again. Chief?
Sir, members of the council, thank you for leaning in with the PD. I don't have anything else to report. I think most everybody was here yesterday when we reported out. I got to give a lot of credit to the staff at the PD for ramping that up. As I mentioned just briefly, you don't know how many times we revisited that org chart. And what we thought would be too much, too less, trying to find that balance. But thank you for your understanding and digging into that and looking at it and, and having the bandwidth and the depth to understand what it is we're trying to do. And so that's, that's what I have, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Rose?
Finance is working on payroll this week. We got our W2s and 1099s out yesterday. So I slept good last night. And I did send an email to the bond council, started that ball rolling, so officially started it rolling. And I've been CCing Kate on those kinds of correspondences, so when she comes in next Tuesday, she can hit the ground. so when she comes in next Tuesday, she can hit the ground running and knows where we're at with projects, et cetera. Other than that, I think just kind of normal year-end stuff and month-end stuff. And there was something else I was gonna say too, but I've forgotten now what it was. So yeah, it's been a very busy seven months and I'm kind of looking forward to not having to go to meetings at night.
Thank you, Rose. By the way, I just heard a whisper that you're more efficient than the county.
That's true, you got your, you got your W2s and your 1099s done before I did, so kudos to you.
Nick.
You know, we got some great news. As you can see, Fautnah's back. As Will said, my supervisor's back and so everyone's appreciative of that. On a serious note and optimistic note, Monday, we are interviewing, it looks to be five, maybe six, could be four, candidates for the code enforcement officer position. So we're scheduling, there's been a couple non-responses, but we do have probably two candidates that are serious consideration. You'll find out here in the coming days that code enforcement is one of the priorities for the community development department. And that may look like maybe changing that position from a part-time to full-time. So we have definitely felt not having the code enforcement officer position filled. So we don't want to rush that hire. We want to hire someone that can be trained and do the job appropriately, has the skill sets to do it. The last thing we want to do is put someone in a, in a position they're not equipped to do and create risk for the city. And of course, not achieve our code enforcement goals as a community and council. So that's a lot of focus on right now. And we, we've got a lot going on in the community development department. We got a couple zone changes that we're working on. You will have two urban growth boundary amendment proposals coming to you this kind of late winter, early spring, which are kind of big projects. Council doesn't usually do that very often. So excited, very excited, me in this very genuinely, for the new budget annual goal-setting process. I'm very optimistic that staff is gonna be responsive to council and then the, the issues and concerns you've identified in the past. So we are putting in the effort. I'm really, I really think that you're gonna see that and you're gonna appreciate that. So I'm actually looking forward to 31st on so many different levels, so I'm excited about that. So a lot of good things happening in community development.
I have a question for you. For the week that you were interim city administrator, how did it go and how did you feel?
It went largely well. How did I feel? Well, I was actually doing four jobs because I didn't have a code enforcement officer, I didn't have an associate planner, and we didn't have a city administrator, and I was there. So you know, it, it went well. I think I, I really appreciate the, that position and the power of convening and solving problems. So there was concern from the police chief on snow palling. Jeff Hurry wasn't available, so we brought in Michelle and one of our other utility managers. So we had a good huddle, solved some problems and got everyone on the same page before problems started there. I was happy about that. You know, it was a good experience. As I told Will, you make it look easy. But I was, going back to the mayor's comment about having delayed closures, police chief called me and said, hey, I think we need this. I wasn't out of my house yet for obvious reasons, so we're, we're now working on having a, a plan for that. And most of our staff is essential duty, so it's not like you can delay their start. You hope that they can get to work, quite honestly. But, but really, you know, if you can avoid unsafe travel and someone get injured or in an accident coming to work, we should, we need to be looking at that. So I mean, that was, that was probably the first or second time in my 15-year career that we've even had to do that. So it was great and we had the team to, you know, speak into that and say, hey, let's, let's, let's talk about this, make a decision. And so we're, we're still seeing that play out today. And nonetheless, though, we're, we're looking forward to winter, pardon me, summer. So we don't have that problem moving forward, so thank you for the question.
Michelle.
So I just have a couple things. We're gonna have students coming from Tomy City in March. On March 24th, we're gonna be doing a barbecue and we've, we'll be sending out a little invite with an RSVP. We would like for council to attend that. They will be doing a presentation for council during that time and we will feed you. Or I should say the Tomy City group will feed you. So when that gets a little bit closer, we'll be sending that, we'll be sending that out. And then.
Quick question, is that, is that just for us or is that open to this whole city, the public?
The, usually the barbecue is for, it kind of wraps up their stay here. And it's more of a, a, a chance for them to get to see you guys as city council and, and staff. They really like that. Even the mayor is gonna host one of the students and Will is gonna host somebody from Tomy City too. So we've, it's gonna be a big family, I guess you would say. So yeah, so we're excited for that to be coming and you'll see more of that when it, when we get a little more information for what they're gonna do. They're pretty jam-packed while they're here as far as things that they're, they're doing. And then as far as projects go, as Rose said, J Street, we did the last payment today. That was a long two-year project for building a bridge. And then one of our quick projects actually finished up today, the odor control project. They came out and started that up and Dan reported back to me that his room didn't smell anymore. Where everything comes in, Headworks was, was smelling nice, so I told him, awesome. So that's another one that's done and complete. And with the building and, or the houses that are projected out there, that'll make a big difference when it comes time for that. So, and then really, thank you for acknowledging the guys, they worked hard.
I live in Oak Street, I don't know if you were there, but I wonder why the truck has passed there one morning like six times. I was like, I know Counselor Siebel and me live there, but they have to go so many times. So I think that Oak Street was really, I guess it's because of the hospital and because of all the facilities, right?
So we have, when it's continually snowing like it did on, I think that was Thursday or something where it snowed, we have to maintain what we call our primary and secondary routes and that is to keep those open. So as it continually snows, we go back over it until the snow stops and then we're able to fan out into the subdivisions and the industrial area and places like that. But yes, you're right, because Oak Street is up to the hospital, that is a main route to keep open.
Okay, thank you, not because we are there, I just feel awful with that.
I did want to point out, one of the, one of the entries that my wife pointed out was, somebody was complaining about when you plow, please don't plow and have a berm in the middle of the road. And so you don't, they're off to the side and then someone, you knew it was gonna happen. Someone complained about this, and soon as she did, she got blasted by everybody else. You go, you go, right on, yeah, so. Lorraine, you want to come up and give us a report of the airport?
Right. Wow.
You didn't know I was gonna do that, did you?
Winter. What was that?
So you didn't know I was gonna do that too, did you?
Yeah, yeah.
I get used to it.
I'm happy to. So winter at the airport is intense and with the ice. So we tried to keep it open as much as possible. We did have help from the big city trucks, but it's a very large complex. So if I have bags under my eyes, that's why. I've never plowed as much as I have this last week and it was really eye-opening to a lot of ways that we can improve procedures for snow removal. We did have, it was the week of the last city council meeting, so two weeks ago when we had our first storm, there was a quick response, it wasn't very much snow, but we were able to have a lifelike aircraft come in the following morning, pretty early. And we had huge kudos from that pilot. I spoke with him and he said it was fantastic, thank you. And that's actually continued with other pilots as they come in, they've been very impressed. I spent most of today in between meetings and trying to stay up on emails and such, plowing because I still don't have it fully cleared. It's again, a very large complex. But I don't know if you noticed how many aircraft were in the air today. There were many, including the smoke jumpers from Redmond, they were training, just landing and taking off. They use our airport. And we had epic aircraft, AeroAir, coming in and out with their citations. So it's, it was very lively and I did get video and photos for social media as I'm sitting in the truck. Yeah, so that is, I did make some notes really quick. So we do have coffee cuppers on Friday, February 2nd at the airport and I'd love for everyone to come and join us there. We did have to cancel our town hall, which I was very bummed about, but there was a lot of ice. We did have to cancel the airport industrial site committee, so we're gonna continue that next month. Working on everyone I'm talking to, just working on different economic development possibilities with the pilots that are flying in. I tend to talk a lot, so I ask a lot of questions. So we're working through that and also working through the airport emergency procedures. So I will be speaking more with our emergency members. And let's see, moving forward with the plans for the Madras Airport Day on June 1st, we are continuing to improve different ways for our pilots and aircraft at the airport and I look forward to seeing how we can improve. Oh, FEMA. For those that were interested, I did send the contact list to FEMA today, so you'll be hearing back from them. So they will be here on February 23rd. We'll have a general meeting at the airport office in the morning for anyone that's interested to come and hear about the plan. And then they'll be doing onsite visits, I was gonna say inspections, but visits with those that are interested. So hopefully all of our larger tenants and businesses around and emergency services can be part of that. So that's not all I have, but that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Lorraine, and I appreciate your newsletter you sent out before.
Yes, and I'm working on the next one, thank you.
Will, you well enough to talk?
I'll give it a shot, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and council. I've got three quick things. First off, a series of shout-outs. The first one was, I was on the Riverwalk in San Antonio. My wife looked over at me, goes, aren't you worried about what's going on in Madras? I said, no, because I trust Nick. And Nick did a phenomenal job. I did not get a bunch of emails, I didn't get any calls. I mean, he really stepped up, so I appreciate that. Rose, during the last seven months, you've done a phenomenal job keeping the city afloat. Finance has got so many moving pieces, it's hard to keep track of all of them. And you were able to do that and come to me with, with challenges, you had solutions as well. So I very much appreciate everything you did. Cindy Smith is gonna be her last couple of days here with us tomorrow and Thursday. She's our HR consultant and I really feel like we've got a great foothold with respect to what we're gonna look for in our HHR person. We're really gonna have that person focused just on HR because there's a lot of pieces that we need to put back in place. For those that I've mentioned several times about a letter of intent up at the airport for some property, the individuals have signed the letter of intent. They have put together their discovery team and will be coming out and visiting and talking about their project. For those, a quick reminder, Christie Worster started this when there was an interest of a group to put in a car club and it's expanded beyond that to a, an event center as well as an amphitheater for various concerts, et cetera. So we'll know more about that and obviously we'll bring to council and updates as we progress with discussions toward a lease of their property. And then finally, don't forget the budget retreat. Counselor Siebel, I'm gonna hold your comments to heart about trusting staff, so I'm looking forward to your engagement on the 31st at the budget retreat because it's going to be a fun and lively discussion about what your goals are. And then you'll hear from staff what our recommendations are. So I appreciate everything and thanks for letting me work at home while I haven't been feeling great.
Thank you, Will. Kelly.
I will echo what Will said as far as Cindy Smith has been a huge help in that HR office and filling in and doing amazing work, so we've been very lucky to have her. Jessica, our temp has been also supporting Cindy in a crazy amount of ways, but in addition to that, she's also been doing the contract management like I reported last time. So we now have 72 of our contracts into contract management. Michelle got a demo of it and gave us her feedback. And then hopefully in the next couple weeks, we're gonna be scheduling for all staff that will be managing the contract software. The Edco intern who's here to help us with some marketing efforts, he and I met the week of our last council meeting, that went phenomenal. He's gonna bring a lot of really good ideas to the table and we had to cancel due to the snowstorm last week, but there's key staff that are meeting with him and I tomorrow afternoon for his analysis after what he's done, his initial intake of our social medias and our websites and then his recommendations of where we should start implementing some changes. That's it.
Thank you. And do we have council with us tonight?
Oh, can I actually mention one more thing? So I received emails back from almost everybody on the Edco luncheon. Mayor, did you want to go to the Edco luncheon? February 8th, I believe.
Is anybody else going?
Gabriel's the only other one that has responded.
Oh.
It looks busy.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can, I can go. Yeah, it's in bed, I can go with it.
You said you will go?
I can go.
Okay, then, I don't know.
There's staff going too?
There is, Nick and Will are planning to attend us right now. Debbie from the chamber will be there as well. All right, that was it.
All right, no council on there, all right. I'm not gonna be able to go to the retreat on the 31st. I have a work appointment in Hillsborough, but I'm thinking maybe I can call in.
We should be able to set up a Zoom for, we should be able to.
Cool, all right. Um, anybody have anything else? If not, then we'll go ahead and adjourn at 8:04.